So it's 6:03, I'd like to open up the meeting. And just wondering if there are any adjustments at all to the agenda?
Yes, Michael?
Yes, oh, oh, that, okay, that doesn't look like Robin in silhouette there.
Don't sound like her either.
That'll help, not really.
Not really, it's the windows behind you, maybe just turning your laptop or computer, whatever you've got there. That's a little better.
So outside of the treasurer, I was notified yesterday that there is some class four roads that have gates across them. One is Hattie Bell Road. It starts down on here on Route 14. And the other one is on the old quarry road.
Really? Okay.
So, yes, it was brought to my attention by somebody who tried passing through and there's gates on both of them. So, yeah. Because I'd love to have a gate on ours if we're able to.
Do that.
So much money into our road, but yeah, yeah.
So, okay, I'll check those out tomorrow. Those are definitely illegal. There's also a gate or a cable across the far end of the old North Row, or not the old North Row, but the North Row.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, I'll check it out.
Thank you.
Where's the cable across the North Road?
Way out, just before you get to the Cabot Town Line. It's, it's actually, it's, it's so much of a old class road, in fact, it's, you hardly even know there's a road there now.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah. Those must be fairly new, I would think, those two gates.
From what I heard, yes, that they put down fresh grass and seed, or hay and seed to, to, yeah, to put, draw the line, and then there's a fence.
Okay, it's not our old friend, you know who?
That I don't know.
I guess I'll find out, anyway. So I have one other adjustment to the agenda, I forgot, neglected to put down, under appointed and elected officials, the town constable. So I'd like to add that to that list. Any public comment at all? Okay. So, Brandy, for approving the bills to the town, when you get the, you know, the warrants and the bills there, we'll come in and sign them, let us know, and as far as voting to approve them, we'll, we'll vote with our signature this, this week, whenever.
So they're all set?
Okay, yeah, great, okay. So, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the March 22nd, 2021 Select Board Meeting?
Chris, no, Kristen moves.
Okay, and I'll, I'll second, all in favor? Say aye. Aye, okay, so those are, those are done. Diana or Robin, we're ready for the town clerk's report?
Robin just got a dog license customer she's dealing with.
Okay, all right, we can wait a bit.
Yeah.
It looks like Brandy's gonna help her with that.
Oh, nice. So, okay, so Robin's back.
Yep.
Okay, Brandy's doing my dog licenses for me. Since the last select board, and that's basically all I've done is dog licenses, we're up to 125 of them now registered. And I have, on a regular basis, been answering the phone now, so I can get a feel of the questions that are coming in. And Kim Silk called and asked for any dogs that hadn't been registered as of last Friday.
Was that the deadline? Last Friday?
Deadline was actually the first.
Okay.
Yeah, so I did up a list for him, and I've got it hanging outside, and he hasn't picked it up yet, but, okay, it's ready for him.
Okay, great.
And that's about what I've been doing.
Okay, yeah. Facing dogs.
Yes.
Okay.
I can update you on the
Okay, so we're, we're getting that echo, Diana, so maybe Rob, Robin, if you turn yours, mic off, that should do it.
Okay.
That's better.
Okay, so we posted it in all the usual places, and in the, in the hard work is that, and sent it out on Front Porch Forum, and we've had two requests for absentee ballots.
Did you post anything on the website?
The website, yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's on the website, yeah.
Okay.
I'll probably put it on Front Porch Forum again in another week or so.
Uh huh. Remind folks. Anything else for?
All the, the newspaper ads for the mowing and the library roof.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Otherwise trying to clean up stuff, and Robin and I spent some time this morning on the, the state voter registration. Right, well, teaching her some of the quirks and strange things that you have to deal with, like all of a sudden, there's a new road, North Hattie Bell Road, and somebody on Hattie Bell Road wants to register to vote, but it's in the system because Skip has to give me all kinds of information on where it starts and ends, and which direction it goes in, and all that, so. It's just fun things to deal with.
Yeah.
So.
Any, any, okay, so I guess we'll wait for, could you let Brandy know that we're ready for the town treasurer's report?
Yeah, yeah, Robin's gone back over to.
Yeah, I can, I can see behind you, I can sort of get a sense of what's going on down there. Brandy. So, Brandy Walls, yeah, okay, so Diana, you should probably turn off your mic, please. Okay.
Okay, so, a couple things. So our payroll audit from the LCT came back, so we will be getting a refund, which is great. Because of the mild winter, I had over budgeted, well, I didn't over budget, but it's an estimation, so we're getting money from the LCT. I ended up doing a $45,000 transfer today, because there was a bunch of things, and you'll see them when you come in to sign on the warrant.
Okay.
Which I can, I can grab just to give you a breakdown.
Okay.
So accounts payable today is $50,528.16. Other income, I'm doing a delinquency deposit Ron had left on my, in my bag, in the, in the vault. Diane also has a town clerk fees or, or income to the office that I have to do for a deposit. We also received, in the meantime, a check from the IRS stating a refund. I had Tom, my assistant, come in, that was one of his things I had him look into. There was no overpayment on my part. So he is still trying to be on hold and figure out with IRS, but his estimation is it's a COVID refund to the town. Which was great, that was just a little over 2,000. Other things, so Tom came in while I was gone, he did the reconciliation on the 941s, he did the Department of Labor, the, the state deposit, he did Bank Rex and journal entries as far as the interest onto the money market and the checking account. And you'll see those, I'll leave those for the board to view also. Other things. I think that's about it.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, I can't really ask you for a question, since you guys haven't reviewed payroll and AP yet. But, yeah.
Okay, did, did you experience any of the wild crazy weather while you were down south, just as a kind of an aside to the whole?
It was 85 the whole week. It was, I was cold today. But it was really nice, it was the birds and the, they're mowing their lawn already, but, yeah. It was nice to see family.
Yeah, yeah, sure it was, yeah. Well, good, good to have you back.
Thank you.
And I saw your negative COVID report, that was good to see, too.
Yes.
Yeah. So Chuck, looks like we're ready for the town highry report.
Okay, well, I sent you emails about the grader, that's up and running, and everything's going.
Yeah, seen it, seen it out at work here, that's good.
That's good. You're supposed to change oil on it, and everything should be back to normal with it. Just to make, just to make sure that, and send an oil sample, and just to make sure it's all clean and everything. So that'll be good, the speed limit signs up on East Hill are put up.
Oh, wow.
I haven't heard anything, any complaints either way, so I guess that's a good thing.
Yeah.
And.
That's, that's on Keen Farm Road, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Where it turns a class four.
Yeah, yeah, I know where that spot is, yeah.
Yeah, and the boys honed the county road last Monday, then they went to the Cabot Road and added some stuff and honed it, and I guess they were back up there today, putting some more in. I was hoping Paul was gonna be here, because I'm starting to get after him about cleaning the intersections up.
Okay.
And Greg is pretty adamant that they usually do that with the fire trucks.
Okay.
So.
Um. Maybe I'll have Greg get in touch with Chance. Paul's away for the week, is my understanding.
Okay, well, I can get ahold of Chance, as far as that goes.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think he's kind of second in command there, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Okay, I'll do that. And just to get a head start on things. And then, I'm not sure if I said anything last time or not, I guess we're doing some pavement on Route 14 around Woodbury Lake this year.
Yeah, they, they should be, a kind of a resurfacing.
Yeah, so they're gonna add some to the apron on the end of East Hill.
Yeah.
Just how much.
Yeah. And anything will help.
Yes, yeah, if you can get it up there currently, so they can get straightened out before they start spending, it'd help.
Yeah. Robin, did you have a question for Chuck?
Yeah, when I just came up around the lake, coming to the meeting, I noticed that somebody had spun it up, and there's about three stones in the middle of Route 14, about the size of baseballs.
Oh, wow.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
If they're still there, when I go back down, I'll pull over and get them out of the road, but they were there when I came up.
All right, thanks. They, I don't know if it was, yeah, I think it was today, they went to East Hill. So maybe they loosened them up, and they got it rolled out there, I don't know, but. I will be talking to Greg in the morning, and I'll have him check it.
Okay. But. Speaking, speaking of East Hill, Chuck, I got an email from Mary Gengemy, Gengemy about up above their house, which is one of those houses right under the, the bank, as you first go up East Hill.
Is that Bruce Tucker's old place?
I think so, yeah, yeah. Anyway, above their house off East Hill Road, there's the water on the, I'll call it the south side of the road, has been creating a bit of a gully where it runs off the road, just above their house. So that, you know, it may take a little ditching or some, something there to fix that in the, in the somewhat near future. Sometimes, sometime this summer, but.
Well, if there's water going down over, we'll see if we can get it stopped.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and back up Bruce Tucker's.
I guess so, I, I'm not sure, it's, you know where Bob Fair lives?
Yeah, the next house.
It's the next house.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I heard somebody bought it, but I don't, I didn't know who it was.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
I'll talk to Greg tomorrow about it. I'm thinking I'm gonna be back a week from this Thursday or Friday, so.
Okay, great.
We'll make a plan on getting it straightened out completely.
Okay, yeah.
So. What do you know about the fire department and Washington intersection, did they used to do that?
I have never heard of that, I've never seen them doing it, but maybe right down in the village, I bet they might have done that.
Well, years ago, they used to do all the intersections, but I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know what the deal is, that's why I was hoping.
Okay, well, in the past here, you know, like I live where Dog Pond Road hits onto Foster Hill Road, right where the pavement is, and I haven't seen anybody there doing much at that intersection the last couple of years, but they used to have this kind of roller automatic brush, and they were kind of.
But there's no water with it, and.
No, there's no water, yeah, so they would, they would try to clean it up that way.
Well, if they took the dump, the old dump truck down to the water tank in it and sprayed it first, I think Robbie can do it.
Okay.
Getting them boys to get out of the realm of things is a little tough sometimes.
Uh huh. Yeah.
All right, so I'll call Chance and ask him, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, and you know, Tim, Tim being on the road crew, he, and the fire department also, he may know a little bit more about that, too, but Chance, Chance, I think, is the second in command.
Yeah, I think he is, too. All right, all right, I'll give him a call. But, I mean, it's still early, so I guess if it was another week to do it, wouldn't be that big a deal, but.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I asked Greg about the roads, and he says the roads are good in general, they're dried up, some of them are kind of rough, but.
Yeah, yeah, it's amazing that, of course, it's been pretty dry anyway here, so they have dried up, but, and then there are these wet spots. You know, where you'll go along, the road's fine, and then it's kind of really wet and gets, it is getting rutted up a bit now, but you can't really, it's still too wet and soft to grade it, too, and.
Most of them are clay boils, there's clay under there with no way for the water to get out.
Yeah, yeah.
Them should be dug down into and have some drainage put in them. Water could get out from under them, and then it would dry up on the rest of the road.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, the worst clay boil that I've been seeing, and it's there every, every year, is up by David and Susan Sawyer's house.
Yes, that one's always been bad, they, they put drainage in there years ago, but I think it must be plugged up now.
Uh huh, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to do something to that, with the high drive and the schoolyard and every, and the parking lot for the town pass, I got an idea, that's about all the extras we'll get this year.
You got a pretty long list for this summer already.
I do.
And a pretty, some pretty major projects, too.
Yeah, yeah, so.
What? One thing I, one thing I wanted to ask you about, with the, the Better Roads Grant, at the bottom of Valley Lake Road in the village, are you thinking that the road crew would do that work, or did you want to try to, to bid it out?
I haven't seen a plan of what the work is yet, I guess, I'd like to see that before I
Okay.
if we could take it on or not.
Right, I think I have, I have some paper copies of that.
You do?
And I think I have it digitally, too, I will look for it and send it down to you, if I do, I'll let you know one way or the other.
Because from what I've heard, there's plenty of gravel in there, they say like it's five feet of gravel in there, so.
Yeah, there's plenty of gravel, in fact, the part of the project is removing some of that gravel, but, yeah, there's lots of gravel there.
Well, and I would like to see that plan, too, because with that schoolyard right there, that needs quite a lot more gravel, and that would be the ideal place to be putting it.
Yep.
So, yeah, and like I say, I'll be home the end of next week.
Okay.
We probably, as far as the schoolyard, we probably won't get started on that until after school's out.
No, it wouldn't, it would, yeah, it would be hard to do it when school's in session, for sure.
Yeah.
Chuck, I wanted to let you know about a, kind of a workshop, webinar kind of thing about the municipal roads general permit.
Yeah.
And I've signed up for it, a lot of it's the kind of technical, you know, the reports and stuff that I'm still trying to figure out and learn. But you might be interested, and it's, it's an hour and a half long, it's on Wednesday, April 28th, so I think you'd be back by then.
Yeah.
I could sign you up for it if you'd like me to. And then I could send you the information about it, it's, let's see, yeah, it's mostly one, one part of it is, is, you know, reassessing the road after the work has been done to, to make sure that it's been upgraded to the municipal roads general permit standards, which are pretty much, you know, the things that we've been talking about, the berms and the crown and everything else.
Right.
Which you would be familiar with.
Yeah, I'd like to be signed up for it.
Okay, I will sign you up for it. And good, okay, just wanted to let you know about that.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and, and Chuck, I'm gonna be there as well.
Okay, great.
Because I'm, I'm part of the, the V Trans, like, working group now. A select board member, so I'll, I'll see you there.
Cool.
Yeah, be good, be good if we had a couple of us.
Yeah.
Take advantage of it.
Yep. And usually when they do those, they also record them, so we could, and we can request a recording, so could have it to refer to, or, or whatever. Paul would probably be interested in that, too, I know he has a, a strong interest in the roads, but we'll see, he might, he might be busy, he might not be, but. So, at the town office right now, is the certic, certification for compliance for the state codes and standards, the road and bridge standards that, that I think I sent copies of everyone to, it's a, it's a yearly thing that we've signed, it basically allows us to get grant money, and it just states that we know what the codes are, and we're gonna, you know, kind of, when we do work on the roads, that that's the, that's the way, the work that we'll do. It's, there's nothing, nothing new, I mean, I think Chuck, you probably, you know, have maybe even higher standards than, than they do, but but the select board needs to sign off on it, so I left it at the town office, it's on the table there where the bills and things will be, and as soon as we get, you know, Chris, if you and I have signed off on it, that's a quorum, I can, I'll probably leave it there for Paul to sign when he's back next week, but I could scan it and send it in, and then we're, we're good, we're good till the first of June, anyway, so. So there's, there's not an emergency to get it signed and then.
Thanks, Michael, I'll, I'll be in tomorrow.
Okay.
Sign documents, so I'll take a look at it, and it'll give me a minute to, to have a look over it as well, and understand what I'm signing, so, thanks.
I can, did, I think I can send you those codes and standards, if you didn't, don't think you've got them, but I think I did send them to you.
Sorry, go ahead, Chuck, sorry.
I wasn't sure which one it was, I was, yeah, I'm pretty sure you did, you're in my.
I, I know I sent them to you, Chuck, I probably sent them to you twice. But.
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll, I get inundated by emails, I probably.
I know you do, I know.
Just take another look.
Thanks. If you can't find, if you can't find it, let me know.
Thanks, thanks.
And then, so tomorrow, I have the two municipal highway grant applications pretty much finished. I'll be sending those in tomorrow. The deadline, of course, is April 15th, so we'll make sure we get him in before that, and and that's, yeah, so that's, that's pretty much all I had for the town highry report, I can't think of anything else that anybody can think of. No, okay.
I'm just gonna jump in really quick, Chuck and I talked about this briefly, and Michael, I think you and I talked about it as well, but I finally was able to get in touch with Jay McDonald about actually producing sort of the, the material that we would want for a long, for a longer period. Swenson is happy to leave it up there, so that's good.
Okay.
I am waiting on a quote for what the, what, what, what's gonna cost, what really we're gonna pay for.
Okay.
Swenson's gonna donate the material, which I think we kind of knew, but they guaranteed it. So we're paying for the crushing costs.
Okay.
Storage is not a big deal, so we're in good shape for that, as soon as I get a quote, I'll let everybody know.
So would McDonald go up there and crush it on site, and we could store it up by the quarry?
Yes, correct.
Okay, great, there's a very impressive pile of crushed granite there right now. Now, you can actually see it, see it from the Cabot Road.
Yeah, you can.
Chris, Chris Davison told me we were welcome to help ourselves to that plow.
He did. Yeah, I agree, so, yeah, so when I talked to Chris, he said, if anything that we want to use, we just go ahead and use.
Okay.
We can take advantage of it right now, which I think is actually really, really great.
Yeah.
But we'll get, we'll get a quote for the longer term, in terms of, you know, our, our goal of materials, and we'll store it there for the time being.
That's great.
Do you have to bring the loader up?
No, no.
They, they let us use your loader?
They'll let us use gear, as far as I understand, Chuck, maybe you can answer this better than.
Well, they're there, eventually, we're gonna have to take our loader up to load it.
Yeah, that's true. Yep, in the short term, we can use their, we can use their equipment. Or they, they will. In the long term, when we have, you know, storage of that material there on site, it'll have to be our, our equipment.
I don't see where that's a big deal, though, that loader can spend some time up there, just as long as it can hold down there.
Right, I, I, I feel, I feel like, I feel, I feel like we can, you know, as long as we have good storage capacity there, and they're willing to do that. And, you know, there will, I, when I talked to Chris, and maybe Chuck can tell me more, he, you know, he was very helpful, and Kevin Swenson was totally willing to let us leave material there for a long, a relatively long period of time, I mean, you know, on the order of a couple of years. Few years, so I think that, we don't want to take advantage of it too much, but at the same time, I, I think, I think this can work out fairly well for us.
I think, great, it would be really foolish not to take advantage of it.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think we're gonna get it at a pretty darn good price, because materials free, and the, everything is up there already. So, you know, I'd, I'd rather crush more rather than less and pay for it.
But. Yeah. Yeah, it's like, if it's there, it's like money in the bank in a way.
That's right.
And I, I think it's gonna be another decade or so before we see a crusher up there, because they're not gonna need another quarter road anytime soon. You know, I, I think that this is the time.
Yeah.
To, to, to pay into this.
Yeah, no, I agree, they, they pretty much have a policy that they've shared with the town that they, you know, because we had asked them about the possibility of crushed granite in the past, and, and they said, you know, to keep the neighbors happy that they really, you know, I don't really consider crushing anything up there, of course, they needed it for that new road, so it made sense for them to do it, but yeah, they, they tend not to, to want to do that there, just because it is pretty, pretty loud, I guess. When they're doing it.
It is a bit noisy.
Yeah, yeah.
When you have houses nearby.
Yep, yep.
All right, that was the only thing I had to add.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Anything else about the town highways? Okay. So moving on to the appointed and elected officials, let's just go, I have a couple new appointments that we can make. And I wanted to talk a little bit, we weren't quite sure what to do about the road formation, so I thought maybe we would talk about that a little bit tonight, whether, you know, Chuck, whether we should appoint Greg, or whether, you know, if that's something the select board should do, or if it's, you know, the road commissioner. So we'll talk about that a little bit, and then I hope, I'd like to get, is Brandy still there, did she go home? Everybody's shaking their head, but I'm not quite sure that's a yes or a no. Everybody's shaking their head, but I'm not quite sure that's a yes or a no. Oh, okay, good. Brandy, I wanted to talk about the auditors a little bit. Why why don't we do that first? Um, so as of this moment, nobody has really come forward to be an auditor. There, we've had one person sort of asking about it. Um, and I, you know, I checked in with VLCT and some towns do not appoint auditors. They just hire a company to do the auditing once a year, like we had planned on doing a few years back and we're kind of dropped it out of the budget when we got a kind of a a budget surprise, I guess I'll call it. Um, so, and I know, um, I kind of wanted to get your opinion. I know chronically that, you know, we we it's been kind of hard to rely on most of the people that we've had as auditors, maybe with the exception of one person. Uh, no names mentioned. Um, so that is something that we could explore, um, is actually just um not worrying about appointing auditors and hiring an auditing firm to do a yearly audit. Woolcott does that. And I think um, when we were looking into that before, it cost them about $10,000 a year. No?
It's 18,000 and that's locked in and for three years.
Okay, ouch. All right. Yes, Diana?
Well, there was one person who showed an interest and I emailed him the other day to see if he was still interested and because we needed to know whether to uh, keep looking for other people and uh, he told me he's interested.
Okay, that but don't, doesn't a town need more than one?
Yeah, yeah. And then there was another person who Brandy was trying to get interested and then there was another one that I uh, is a friend of Chris's who uh, had shown an interest at one time, so I thought maybe we could reach out to him.
Okay, so we'll we'll just kind of be patient and see what happens with.
If we could get those two, uh, John Reed was the one who said he was interested and and uh, the other possible one was Darren Yucinovitz, who is interested in doing something for the town.
Okay. All right.
So I'll jump in and say that I haven't been able to 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 sort of lock Darren down. I think that he would be great.
Yeah.
But he also has a um, brand new baby boy and I I don't think this might be the exact time that he wants to take on uh, this role.
Well, it wasn't a good time for him to be a select person, but I the auditor job is much more, much less time and more flexible, so I was hoping he would consider that.
I'm trying, Miss Diana, but uh, I have no guarantees there.
Okay.
But may I, may I just, just say one thing? Um, it seems like at some point it would be nice to invest in a professional audit. Um, I I I know that Walkit, Walkit spends this money every year. I don't know if we're in that position. Um, I don't think we are, but I think that some regularity of a professional audit might um, be healthy for us to understand uh, how 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 we're how we're how we're working. So maybe this is the moment when we go ahead and invest in that for the future and sort of get the ball rolling. Maybe we decide that every three or five years is is reasonable. Maybe we don't need every year. Um, but at least, you know, consider it.
Um.
So that's that's not a select person's opinion. That's just a, that's a town.
Well, you are a select person, so. But, you know, we've had this conversation before and and the select board in the past, when we had the conversation, um, Brandy was a part of it. We were in agreement to that um, that's the thing with doing it like every three or five years is that it tends to be a little bit more expensive, um, just because you know, the the person, the co- who contracts for it or the company or whatever, it's a bit more work to come in and and um, but you know, there's more that you get out of an audit than just making sure that uh, the dollars all line up is that they actually, you know, can suggest different uh, ways of accounting for things or, you know, they can can be kind of advisory and trying to get you to um, you know, make some changes that would make it easier or more transparent or or whatever. So, you know, I I'm in agreement to that and and then um, in the past, we had a select board that wasn't agreement. Uh, we actually had it written into our budget. Um, but then we dropped it. Um, so uh, yeah, well, let's um, we could continue this discussion, uh, maybe when when Paul's here is here with us um, as a select board. We do have, um, there is a a $10,000 line item in the um, in the present budget for fiscal year twenty-two that we won't be using. For the, we had budgeted $10,000 for the library roof and and at this point, the library is going to be paying for the roof, so there is that.
You think that came out of the budget before the town report?
Oh, did it? Okay, all right. Well, so much for that scheme. Uh.
I think, yeah, so Chuck, I think Chuck was gonna say something, though.
Okay.
A minute ago.
Uh, no, I'm trying to get my telephone ring or shut off, so you did that.
Okay. So, you know, maybe this is something that we plan on for the next fiscal year. We can, would actually have some figures um, and could write it into the budget, or we could look at the budget as it is now and see if there is some money somewhere that we could um, that we could uh, take that from if we wanted to do it this year. When, when uh, Brandy traditionally is a is an audit done before the end of a fiscal year or towards the beginning of the new fiscal year of the old fiscal year? How? How's the scheduling go?
I would love for somebody to come in and do it monthly, so I'm not having to go back in time and remember exactly what I did, or if I did something wrong by by um, account entry or um, but typically the auditors don't come in until the end of the calendar year to get the town report completed um, to send out to be printed. But ideally, I would love somebody in here for an hour, an hour a month to go through the select board orders, to go through bank recs. Um.
So are are you thinking that a town resident could do that?
Oh, yeah.
Auditor, right? Professional audits would be done at the end of the fiscal year.
Yes, that's my understanding. Yeah. So you're thinking that a role for a, you know, an auditor that's from the town, a town resident appointed a a auditor, or actually, they're elected, aren't they? But there were none to elect this year.
Correct.
So an elected auditor, um, they could come in monthly, that that would be helpful. Um.
Staying on top of it, that way they're ahead of the game.
Okay, yeah. Well, we could see if the one person who has expressed an interest so far, if if that would be something that they could do. Skip, yes, you are a former auditor.
Being a former auditor, yeah, usually start in September and you or or like last year, uh, we had uh, I think a monthly wasn't uh, didn't we do something every month? Brandy, uh, to look at your books and then at the end of the year, we put together a uh, an auditor's report for the, for the town report.
Yep.
And so I did talk to John Reed.
Yeah.
And he and I swapped a couple of emails. We had a couple of phone conversations. And I indicated to him that the way we've done it in the past in terms of auditing is that he gets busy around September, September, October, November to put together the town report. Uh, I know Robin Durkey had been in with Brandy, I think, most of last year, most of twenty twenty to do a cumulative report, so at the end of the year, we weren't scrambling around uh, trying to get together the information for the report.
Was that kind of on a monthly time basis that Brandy was kind of suggesting just now?
I don't know if it was that structured. That would be something that Robin and Brandy could speak to. I know that Robin was in there a great deal of the time putting together a comprehensive document that we utilized for our auditing report.
So for me, during tax season, so I get the tax bills out in August, so between August and November, i- it's hard for me to stop um, doing the taxes to individually look into providing information. Robin was very self-efficient. Um, and and somebody with a financial background, you know, could run with it. Um, but for me, yeah, it's hard for me to to get pulled aside from doing deposits when the money is running in that good during that that window of a section from September to to November.
You know, Brandy, one thing that might be helpful for people who who um, are thinking about being an auditor, or if they become an auditor, if you could write up kind of a sort of a job description of of what ideally you would like an auditor to to be able to do um, to assist you um, and in that role. Um.
So I, so in the in, since we've had this transaction of nobody being in here, um, I've I've combined it, Skip's a report to all the information that Robin has, so I do have a binder now um, that is complete to review. I've I've the other person that was um, potentially interested, I did give it to them to review and I haven't heard back yet.
Okay.
Um, so I don't want to give names until I'm
Yeah.
a hundred percent ready to uh.
Yes, Skip.
And I sent John read that information as well.
Okay.
I know Chuck was from the League of Cities and Towns that we use as a template to do the auditing. You know, it encompasses all the fin- financial transactions and also uh, things to do with listers and also uh, any other transactions within within the town as well.
Okay. I know one of the concerns that John had is that he's often away that window of September, October, November, um.
Yeah, he and I spoke about that as well.
Okay.
And was his main concern.
Yeah.
I'm, you know, I'm fully, you know, aware that he could do the job. You know, very confident that he could do a great job. However, it's just the timing on his part, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, well, I guess discussion to be continued and.
But the, but the good thing is, is there's an RFP for that, just so happens.
Oh.
Wanted to go up for.
Okay, that's right for, well, that I guess we should, let's think about that some more. Um, $18,000 a year is a pretty hefty chunk of money for Woodbury to to pay for an auditing a yearly audit. Um, but we could find, you know, we could get, do a little research and find some figures for like a three, every three years or um, and then see if hopefully we would be able to find some residents that would be able to, you know, kind of fill in on a yearly basis in in a less professional way. Um, so I guess we're still gonna figure that, try to figure this one out. But um, do you know, do you know of some auditing contractors, Brandy? I know we 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 did do that RFP and we did get some bids back. Um, maybe just, do you have that filed away somewhere?
Yeah, give me a second.
Don't don't worry about it right now. But.
Well, I think, Michael, the only one that responded was Sullivan and Powers.
Okay.
And they were, I believe, Brandy, correct me if I'm wrong, eighteen grand or something like that.
A little over eighteen grand locked in for three years.
Yeah, I re- I'm remembering that now. Um, yeah, and they do a lot of municipal audits. Um, I know, I think I can ask some folks at the um, Center of Vermont Regional Planning Commission if they might know of some other auditors. So maybe I'll ask. But we could do a little uh, research into what what that might cost the town, just just for our own information in this discussion. All right.
But can I just ask, does anybody know who Walkit uses?
I don't. We could find that out easy enough, but I don't know right off the top of my head.
Well, because we share, we share, you know, a pretty important town boundary with Walkit.
We do. Yeah, and I know.
Maybe we can leverage that in some way and 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 try to consider whether or not, I know that we're two different towns. I understand that part, but.
Yeah. Um, I, I know when we were um, looking into this before, this was three or four years ago, um, Woolcott, the the rate that they were paying whoever they were contracting with was quite a bit less than um, Sullivan and Powers by maybe five or $6,000. But they were doing it on a yearly basis, so it it did make it a little bit cheaper.
So it does drop once the sys- once we're in their system, whoever does the auditing, it's a, it's a clean sweep um, as far as, so they do drop it down in cost once you're in there.
Yeah, yeah. It's a lot of work when you come in.
Right.
Having never seen anything and um, yeah. Okay, well, we'll, we'll keep it on the agenda, kind of keep. Uh, I can get ahold of the person from Woolcott and maybe find out who that might be and um, and then see if there's some other auditing firms besides Sullivan and Powers that um, that might be able to do this, have some municipal experience. Um, and we can see who, who we can, uh, whose earlobe we can twist, drag into the town office. So um, any, a- anything else about the auditing or the auditors for now? So um, I know at our last meeting, there were some questions about the town constable, which I no longer have. I would be you know, I'd like us to consider um, appointing Gary Clark uh, to continue as our town constable. And there's a woman uh, named Becky Browning, who has come forward to be the Woodbury representative to Central Vermont Fiber. Um, and let's see, and then as far as the road foreman, Chuck, if you want to talk a little bit more about that, or we could, you could think about it some more. We could do that at another meeting. Um.
I I. My only concern is is about the winter time. Without having one.
I mean. Well, yeah, no, I think we should have one. I agree, we should have one. Um, and I'm, and you know, I didn't know if you wanted to talk to Greg about that first, or you know, I'm I'm Greg has always been who I consider the road foreman. I'm fine with us. Um, if you're okay with that, you know, appointing him as our road foreman um, for the for the coming year. We could see how Chris feels about that. Um. You know, we may.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, I guess.
All right. And you know, maybe we should wait until Paul's here. He might have some thoughts on that. Um, on that appointment too, but you know, if we don't appoint Greg, I'm not really sure who we can appoint. Um, who's.
We could do is hold off, see, see who third man is we hire.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But you know as well as I do, there's gonna be some hard feelings there if we appoint somebody else.
Yes, I do. And I worry a little bit about, you know, um, road crew morale a little bit. Um, so.
Well.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to worry about that anyway.
I know, I'm worried about it already. I know it's, there are issues. So um. So Chris, um, how do you feel about um, appointing um, Greg Parkers as the road foreman? We, I mean, we could do that this evening. We could wait till our next meeting when Paul's here, so that all three of us can talk about it with Chuck. Um.
Well, I I'd love to hear Paul's opinion, but um, I mean, I think I said this at our last meeting, is that it seemed like this is a transitional period and this would be the ideal job for Greg to to take.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it makes the potential for him to, you know, be hired in that position even better.
Mm-hmm.
If he rises to that occasion, and I think he's capable of it. Um, and it also makes the general transition to this sort of change in structure pretty, pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, so I actually think that this was, this is sort of the ideal configuration as we sort of move forward.
Okay.
I don't think it's permanent necessarily. I think it still has to be advertised for. Just to make it.
Well, I think we're thinking about two different things here.
All right, sorry, Chuck.
Greg's been the road foreman right along.
He has, yeah.
So this is appointing him to be road foreman and then we're gonna have to uh, advertise to hire a third person.
Yeah.
So my, my question was, do you want to hire Greg as a road foreman, or do you want to see who you hire for a third person?
I I would think, um, you know, going forward, by the time we actually do that hire, we're gonna be pretty well into summertime. Um so it and you know, the work kind of is summer work is pretty much beginning um. Right now, or as soon as you get back, um you know, once the once the roads are through their. Their mud season phase um so um. I mean, I would be fine with appointing Greg this evening, I would be fine with waiting until Paul is here um. At our next meeting and and in some ways, I think that Paul would probably appreciate being part of that discussion. I don't, I don't know, you know.
I think he probably would too.
Yeah, so why don't, let's wait uh till our next meeting.
Right, let's hold off, that's fine.
Foreman, so um.
And Chuck, I I I agree with the way that you've described this, what I'm saying is that with that new hire, the structure's probably gonna change. And.
Open it does.
Yeah, and we have to be, we have to be willing to to work with that, you know, potential new structure. But I think for the time being, this is the right, this is the right approach, that's that's sort of where I was coming from.
Right.
But I agree. Two different, two different things going on here.
Chris.
Sorry, Miss Diana.
Commissioner is, I mean, the road foreman is just a one-year appointment.
Right. Thanks, Miss Diana.
Okay, so what I, the people that I would like to appoint um this evening are um. Gary Clark as the town constable and Becky Browning as the Woodbury representative to Central Vermont Fiber. So do I hear a motion to that effect to appoint those two folks to the positions I just mentioned?
We'll make a motion to approve on both cases.
And I guess I'm the second person, so I'll second it and then so all those in favor say aye. Aye, okay, so Gary Clark has been reappointed as the town constable. And Becky Browning is the Woodbury rep. To CV fiber, um I don't know if any of you um have, there was a great article in seven days this past week. Um about these municipal entities of different towns um grouping together to form a communication municipality. And uh that's definitely, I think that's probably the only way that we're gonna get. High-speed internet out to the backroads, go ahead, Skip.
Just as as an aside, if Becky needs any information, any background information, I can certainly forward that to her.
All right.
And I'm still on the email list server for Central Vermont Fiber. And they've been awarded twenty-two million dollars to build out their fiber network.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Really good to have somebody from Woodbury there.
That's a significant amount of money.
Helping the money get passed around to everybody.
Sure.
Yeah, yes, I'll I'll um send Becky your uh email address, Skip, just um and have her get in touch with you. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, right, okay. Um, so I did advertise other empty positions and I don't want to spend too much time on this. Um but we still have no one to the solid waste management district as a rep from Woodbury. Um I didn't hear any response about an assistant to the select board, uh what which what Laura Daley did in the past um. And I didn't hear um anything about um an energy coordinator either um. So I probably will do another posting on um from porch forum and. And see, there were actually two people that were interested in the CV fiber thing, so I'm, I kind of teased the one who chose not to be. The CV fiber person, if they were interested in garbage too, so. We'll see. Okay, so um anything else about elected or appointed officials, buddy, we're good there, okay? So um. The emergency generator um. And actually, uh Skip, um oh, he just, he just jumped out, so. A three, would you like us to to take up the uh review of the community values mapping report? So that you don't have to hang in here for another twenty minutes or half an hour?
Whatever you feel, Michael, I think that Brookfield Services contract would really be exciting, you know.
Okay, well, it 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 what, it actually was kind of exciting for a while there.
I remember.
Okay, all right, well, um let's see, you're scheduled uh seven twenty, okay, we'll be, we'll be there by then.
Oh, sure.
All right, so three weeks ago, um when we had that windstorm, I think there was some even snow, which is hard to believe now. But um the power went off um in town, pretty much it was, power was off here, it was off in Hardwick. And the automatic switch that kicks on the generator to the school, uh when the power goes off, did kick on. However, there wasn't enough cooling fluid in the radiator to the motor for the generator. So the automatic switch automatically shut everything down, and so there was no power to the school, children were there in session. So it was kind of a, wasn't so great with our emergency generator, it's one, once in a lifetime chance to actually function and nothing happened. So I I did talk to Larry Eldred about that, or we emailed back and forth, I guess. And he filled me in on what actually happened then, um and it was, it wasn't the automatic switch that didn't work, it's the fact that um. There was a low fluid in the radiator um. And the Brookfield Services did get out there in about an hour or so and and got things going again um. But one of the things, one of the questions it brings up to me is um, and I did talk to Larry a little bit about this too. Is that, you know, we usually, we have a yearly contract that we sign with them um. And we usually always, there's two options that we have, there's a once-a-year service. Um and there's a semi-annual service, um and of course, the the once-a-year is cheaper and that's what we've always gone with. However, this probably wouldn't have happened if we did do the semi-annual service. And the difference isn't all that much, but hang on, somebody's wanting to join um. Could, could I, the person that I just admitted on the phone, could you identify yourself? Uh you have to press star six to be able to speak.
I don't want to be Martian DC in a week.
So. This is for the person that I just admitted to the meeting, um on the, you're on the phone, ending, your phone number ends with eight eight two. Could you press star six to open up the phone line so that you can identify who you are?
Yes, this is Kaki Pelts.
Okay, thank you, Kaki, okay.
You're welcome.
Um, so. I, you know, and so I asked Larry, you know, Larry mentioned to me that um they had always, back when the school district was. Was the one overseeing the generator, that they had the twice-a-year, the semi-annual. Service, which the annual service is um about, I think it's nine hundred dollars, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And the semi-annual or twice-a-year visit is is a fourteen hundred and forty-two dollars. So Larry definitely recommends. The twice-a-year service, I could bring up on the screen if you, if you'd like, um what's done for the annual and the semi-annual. If 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 we want to review that, but and we don't have to make a decision tonight, but I'm. I would like to advocate that we change the contract um to a twice-a-year semi-annual contract. Just so that a little glitch like not enough fluid in the radiator um isn't gonna shut us down when we actually need. The building for an emergency shelter and you know, if Brookfield services, if it was a major statewide emergency, they wouldn't be able to get there. And um, you know, we we might be counting on a generator that isn't functioning um. So we don't have to make a decision tonight, um I could bring that up if we want to just quickly look at um the difference between a. An annual or a semi-annual service um.
Just to ask really quickly, the vintage of that generator is what? Do we have a sense of how old that is?
Uh I think it's about, I don't know, I think it's twenty years old or twenty-five years old.
So it's, it's uh well past its useful life?
I don't think so, um I don't know the answer to that, that would be something I could ask that of the Brookfield Service people.
I I think we should, before we, before we uh embrace a new uh contracts. Let's make sure that we're not just working on a generator that is prone to potential failure.
Okay.
By the um, it's, it's, it's right by the plowed part of the parking lot. It sees more salt than most generators would would do and sand, and I know that. Well, it's, it's not, it's not the newest version of a generator.
Right.
Um, and as a backup, it's probably not in the best place. So let's make sure that we're, we're investing in something that actually is gonna be functional. Um otherwise, I completely advocate for the semi-annual contract, the more frequent inspection of it.
Yeah.
Because this is not just a school, it's a community building.
Right, exactly, yeah, so.
Does anybody know, does anybody know if they run a uh pressure test? To check out the generator to see why the antifreeze was gone?
Well, the the fire department, before the um, the automatic switch was put in, which was, that was put in about a year ago. They used to do, at least in the MOU um with this, for the generator, they would do a weekly check. A weekly run of the system to make sure it was working, and apparently with with the automatic switch in there, they stopped doing that.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is reason that antifreeze is gone. And you should at least have that, somebody run a uh a pressure check on that cooling system. To see if there's a leak and where it is, and that will determine quite a lot about whether you ought to be putting money into that generator or going a different route.
Okay, so that's another question I can ask Brookfield Services um.
Because if that happens to be a head gasket and it's either burning it or putting it in the oil. That's sort of like uh feeding a dead horse.
Yeah, that's major, um, okay. So um I will give them a call and um try to get a hold of a technician to ask them questions about the generator. So right now I have um, uh how old is it, what kind of shape is it in? Is there some type of pressure check? Or do they, I would imagine when they do their servicing, that they definitely do a pressure check on the the system, but I'll ask them about.
Probably depends on if the antifreeze is low or not, if the antifreeze is low, I would hope they did a pressure test.
Okay.
If it was up full, they might not.
Right.
But as far as um. You could get a hold of Brian Shatney and have him go and put a pressure test on it, all this gauge and.
Okay.
To make sure that, you know, if there's an external leak, you'll start seeing antifreeze running, if it's an internal leak. And the pressure goes down, you won't see it, but you'll know there's a problem.
Yeah. Um yeah, on this preventative maintenance list that they have um. There's, let's see, they have um check cooling system level, they do that. Both, you know, anytime they come, clean and flush the cooling system, that's a whole separate quote, so that would be a special. Maintenance project um. And check thermostat operation, check engine jacket coolant heater um. Stuff like that, so.
Well, if it's been a year and it's got a cooling heater on it, it could have just evaporated.
Yeah, I was gonna agree with Chuck, could have just gone away.
Yeah, so, yes, Brandy.
So. When I last took, talked with Chance and with Brookfield, um the only person that has a set of keys. To the maintenance of the generator is the school, the 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 fire department no longer has a key, the town doesn't have a key. Um, so that's one thing I did tell them that that um if there is stuff that the town or. The fire department can check annually or or monthly, that they get a set of keys and um. And they're able to do it, so Brookfield was willing to do a run-through of stuff that they can check. But I think it's necessary that the town and the fire department at least have a set of keys, not just the school.
Right.
For this.
With with this, with this kind of um checking, would it be like the maintenance person at the school? That would be the main person responsible for that or uh the fire department with the, you know, we, of course, we don't have anybody. We could check with the fire department, they used to do a a fairly consistent check of the generator. Um and now, now they aren't, so um.
And for us, uh and there it goes with the the school and the and then the town and.
Right.
Um but but the fire department meet every Tuesday or every Wednesday and and for them to just set it on their schedule of checking it. Um it's, I think it's worth it.
Okay, well, that's what used to be, that's the way it used to be in the old MOU, that they would check it weekly um.
Right.
Well, let's uh, we'll talk to the, uh see if the fire department wants to do that and Brookfield would. My understanding of your communication with Brookfield is that they would come out, a technician would come out and kind of just show us. Show the people responsible what to look for, yeah.
That way, it's not just one person trying to track down that if if somebody from the town, somebody from the fire department, just. As many people that, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, I think, yeah, I think that sounds like a good thing to do, um I maybe I'll, I'll um. I'm gonna call them to talk about the generator itself, I can maybe try to set that up, or maybe talk to Chance first um. Make sure that the fire department is still willing to do that.
Donnie's not willing to do that.
What's that?
Donnie, the school, the janitor's not willing to do that.
I'm sure that he would be, um and I think it would be be good for us to have, um you know. Someone from the uh fire department, I think, would also be um to know what to look for, just in case um.
And you think it would be a great thing, but on the other hand, he's right there every day, I mean, it, what's it on his schedule of things to do uh?
Right, yeah, you know, if there is something that the, you know, the fire department had agreed in the past to do a weekly check of it.
Oh, yeah, sure.
So so if they were still willing to do that, um cause it, the generator also goes to the fire station.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, and we and we have talked about also having it go to the town hall.
Right.
So um.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll just kind of try to reconfigure what's gonna happen with that um and if there is this little training, yes, Skip.
Couple of things, number one, I have a generator as well, and you can, in the newer generators, to go to. To Chris's comment, on the newer generators, you can routine those, you can set them up to routine. Weekly or twice a month, things like that, it's not just, you know, like monthly or or something like that, it's. It it's very, it's, you can set them up as often as you want. And secondly, why does a school have responsibility for that generator?
Well, I think they would prefer not to um.
Well, I can remember going, you know, going back to the Wayback Machine when we found out that we do own the school property. And the school property also encompassed the generator, so I'm wondering why. All of a sudden, the school has the the only set of keys to that generator, it just, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
I think that's just the way it was set up, who knows how many years ago, you know, and it's just been that way. I I was surprised that the fire department didn't have any keys to it.
Yeah, me too, because they, every Tuesday, they used to run. They used to throw the switch, you know, the manual switch and routine that weekly on Tuesday nights.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
It's been, it seems like there's been a lot of moving parts in the last, I don't know, um especially five years.
Especially with with the merger.
And but it would be, especially because this is a, yeah, I I just wanted to think about this as an investment in the future. And I don't see why the town office couldn't take advantage of a system. That is associated with this, so. You know, before we, you know, sign a new contract, whether it's annual or not. I I think it's worth considering whether or not we're, we're dealing with a, an updated system. Um, things have come a long way in the last twenty years.
So do you think that that emergency generator could service the town office? So do you think that that emergency generator could service the town office? Couple, three miles down the road?
I do.
Oh, okay, yeah. Is that something that the town clerk and town treasurer would be interested in, is having? That emergency generator hooked up to the town office?
I think, did you mean the town hall, Chris?
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, the town office is down the hill here from me. The town hall is right in the village. And that's designated, let's say there was an emergency and the children had to leave the school.
Right, I was talking about the town hall. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, yeah, no, that's that's.
We have to be independent of this.
Right, no, the the town hall, we've talked about that and and I I would like us to do that. It would be very easy to do. Um, and you know, and often if if there was an emergency and the fire department, you know, they have the power to the fire station. And uh.
It's our only designated shelter in place facility.
Right, the school.
Our entire town.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I feel like this should be something that we understand really well.
Okay.
Um, right? Not just for the, you know, for the school, but for for the for the town hall as well.
Yeah, um, and and the school, the school is, the school is designated as the town's emergency shelter.
That's correct.
Um, and then the town hall is is has been designated, I don't even know if the school knows this or not, but if. Let's say there was a fire in the school or um something happened to the school and the children needed to leave and needed a place to be. The town hall is designated as the place that they would go.
Right, it's a secondary refuge. Yeah, so. I feel like we should define these things fairly well, and we should also make sure that our system is working, which is not. So. I think that this is a worthwhile endeavor. Um, unbiased, obviously, because I have kids in that school, but.
Right, no, it, you know, I I I agree a hundred percent. Robin?
Miss Turkey. Yes, the town does, the school does know that that is a backup. Because they have a key to the town hall and they also do fire evacuation training down to there.
Oh, good, good. So that brings up another concern I have, Robin. You know that little footbridge over the Kingsbury branch?
Yes.
Do you know who built that?
Yeah.
No.
Sounds like Chuck does.
Well, I was one of them that put it in.
Okay. Some of the, some of the boards on that are starting to look kind of rotten.
Yeah.
Um, I'm thinking maybe um we should take a look at that and and.
I would think all the wood must be getting pretty rotten.
Yeah, yeah.
The underpinning is railroad iron.
Yeah, the those railroad ties will last forever. I'm glad they're there. But yeah, the wood is definitely looking looking kind of old. So, something else.
May may I ask you, gentlemen, or um everybody? Is that something that we could get a grant for within our um? Our, I'm sorry, I don't know the name, but our Woodbury Conservation Commission Group?
Um, oh, you mean the Woodbury Fund?
The fund, yes.
Yeah. Uh, maybe.
I mean, it is a, it is something that we use and walking over it.
Yep.
And people who walk from the hockey rink to the post office on a regular basis. Um, I mean, it's something that we use all year round. Seems like it's a worthwhile investment.
Yeah, no, it is a worthwhile investment. Um, yeah, we could um, we could inquire of the committee on the Woodbury Fund if that's something that. That they might uh consider um funding for.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Okay. I know who to ask that question of, so I can do that. So um, see, that was a tangent on the, we were talking about the the generator still, so. So um, I'll check in with Brookfield Services about the the quality of the generator itself, um, just um. And uh. Maybe see if we could schedule a a time, and I think it would be good for the town to take on the responsibility of. Either by having a s- uh semi-annual contract with Brookfield or having people from the fire department um meet with Brookfield Services to. Have an understanding of what they could do if something didn't work or what to check for as far as a weekly or every other weekly. Uh, run of the system to make sure that everything's working. Um. You know, we'll, I, it sounds like we should just try to figure out how to, what to do to make sure that what happened three weeks ago doesn't happen again.
Uh, can I say something?
Sure.
For the, for the climate that that generator is in, you sure really should be doing a biannual.
Okay, well, that's what Larry said, too.
Just because of the moisture factor and all that. And with that block heater in there, keeping that up to a hundred and sixty degrees, so it'll start with no problem. That's probably where the evaporation came from in your, in your uh antifreeze.
Well, I'm I'm hearing consensus on the semi-annual, but if there's, if there, um, and then maybe just having some town knowledge of. Troubleshooting that that.
Oh, absolutely.
Machine too would be good.
Yeah.
Somebody should understand it pretty good.
Yeah, okay, and I think.
Question of.
Sure.
Yeah. Um, where's the tank? Where's the tank for that?
It's buried in the ground right there where the the generator.
Into it?
Yeah.
Behind it.
It's just behind it, on the downslope side?
Uh, no, almost directly behind it.
I think it's part of that bank that drops down from where the generator is to the ball field.
And do we dip that tank or is that tank isolated?
Uh, that tank, um, I would imagine that there the maintenance of that. And and the upkeep of its condition is the responsibility of the people that own the tank. Um, I'm blanking out on who we actually have serviced uh the propane to that. Brandy probably.
See, that's a propane tank, that's not diesel fuel.
Oh, it's not diesel.
No, it's propane, yeah. And we're now set, we're set for an annual um or semi-annual uh fill-up of that tank. Um, and it's basically owned by whoever we have the contract for for the propane, which Brandy does know who that is. I can't remember.
I do. We recently had it filled and it's suburban.
Suburban.
It's suburban's tank, so we can't go with any other vendor.
Thanks, Miss Brandy.
Yep.
Um, I just want another quick question, and actually, this is for Mrs. Turkey. Is is there a reason that we should consider having a backup generator for the town office separate?
When the power goes out, we need to go home, so I don't really see why that would be a good investment.
Okay.
The vault, in case somebody's in there working, and then the power goes out, we have to find it for them.
Okay, so it sounds like what we should be focusing on for our investment is where we have our fire facilities. And our. Shelter facility in our school.
Yep.
And that's like a worthwhile, and that's the focus of our investment.
Um, yes.
Yep. Do, I'd just like to hear Miss, Miss Diana and Miss Robin. Tell me that. Does that sound like where we should be focused with our funds?
Well, one thing about having the generator here or a generator here, you wouldn't have to worry about messing up your backup on your computers.
But we have, we have uh. What do you call it?
Automatic backup?
Pressers and batteries and things. We've never had a problem with losing anything. We do sometimes have to reboot.
You have, Diana, you have uninterrupted power supplies.
That's what it is, okay.
Yeah, UPS is, that'll uh, I think the rating on that is something like four hours.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but it's just, you know, a small battery.
Okay. Uh, I appreciate it, Skip. Thank you. I'm I'm just trying to understand whether or not we need to be thinking about other things. Thanks, thanks very much.
Okay. Anything else on the generator? I'll I'll have some um answers to questions. We'll have it on the agenda at our next meeting. Uh, let's see. Next thing on the agenda is um the Woodbury Village um. Proposal from the Woodbury Gardening Committee. So Kaki's here, and I know Diana's part of that. So um. Do you want to just go over that briefly? I think um it's been shared with um. The rest of the select board members also, what what the thoughts are behind that.
Kaki has to uh connect herself again.
Kaki, you have to press star six on your phone. And that should unmute you. Okay, there you go.
Okay, okay, yeah. Well, I'm not gonna go, I don't have the proposal in front of me. I'm out of town. Um, but I figured that you all had that, so um. Yeah, and you have it, Diana, so um if there are any questions, uh, I'm not gonna go over it. It's pretty. Explanatory if you've read it. Um, it it the, the gardening committee is a pretty. Of local people who have done some um. Uh, work to keep the flowers blooming in um the village and wanted to um. Increase uh some of those kinds of uh. You know, uh visuals in the town. So, uh. They asked me to put together a proposal and I did and um. And we'll uh see how you feel about that. Um, I'm I'm not gonna, yeah, so that's that's what hap- how it came to be.
Okay.
And, yeah, thanks.
Uh, you know, I personally think it would be nice, um, and it's just, it's a couple cedar planters that you're thinking of to put in the island. Um, that's my understanding of the proposal.
Yeah.
And then stuff to put in the planters, of course, and with a total of a six hundred and twenty dollars as kind of a proposed. Uh, cost. Um, I'm sure we can find the money somewhere um for that. So I I would have um definitely approved this proposal myself. Um.
And I would also approve this proposal. I think it's it's lovely.
Well, that's, that would be great. We have a lot of, uh, we have a few volunteers who are willing to put in the the energy to um. Uh, to get it set up and filled up and planted and watered throughout the summer and um and then next year. Uh, we'll figure out a way to um. Uh, get some more donations maybe to 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 continue to plant it. I mean, that was, that's obviously. If it works out, and we hopefully it will, because we're gonna try to be on it, so we'll see how um how it works.
So I just have one question about the six-foot planters. Is that gonna kind of work? With the uh tr- the trees that are planted there in the flagpole in the middle? It'll work okay, okay?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we went down, Patty and uh another member and myself went down and measured all of that and um. So we've we've taken that into um account and we aren't digging down into the median. We're going to have it raised about six inches off the median, so uh. We want it to be profuse bloom, beautiful woodberry.
Right, sounds good.
That would be pleasing and and kind of just a jolt of um color and and interest that hasn't been there um for a while, so. That's, that was our, that's our goal.
Okay, Rob- Robin, did you have a question?
Yes, Kaki, what is it pressure treated that the planters are gonna be made out of?
No, I think that that Patty Garbeck was pricing cedar, but I don't know if she's, she may do larch, which is also. A a wood that could withstand um. So, no, I I would say no, she's not using pressure cheater treated. I.
Well, the reason why I'm. The reason why I'm asking is, is it gonna withhold, is it gonna withhold the sand and the salt? From the roads?
I I would hope it would be removed in the wintertime. These are.
Where are you gonna store them?
Yeah, you're not gonna be able to remove, yeah.
You're not gonna remove them, okay? Okay, uh. Well, we'll see how they hold up, I guess.
Well, that, yeah, um, they're too, they're too big and they're all the dirt inside. I mean, it would be really a a major. You know, where do we put them? We'd have to have something, somebody come in, pick them up with the dirt, put them back, you know, maybe alongside the town hall or, you know, I, so.
Okay.
I think we wanted to try to, maybe they get covered, you know, and then attractively, you know, so that um. I I don't know, but I mean, if you want us to find that out, we can try to do that.
Uh, I don't think that we need to worry about that. We'll just see um, see what happens. Um, and uh maybe covering would be. Something that we could do, a couple of cheap plastic tarps or something. Um. But um.
So we'll, we'll talk to Patty more specifically about the wood and.
I know, and P and R lumber, you can get five-quarter tamarack um.
Yes, yes, I've got that, yeah.
The thinner stuff tends, does tend to warp a little bit. Um.
Okay, okay. So that's, that's a good tip, and we'll talk to Patty about that. Um, but that should last a while, you know, so um. At at that point, we would probably have people just like clamoring. I don't know how, oh, we can't lose those, we want them. Well, hopefully we can get this to to blossom and.
Okay.
Um, pleasing, so.
Yes, Diana.
And the uh owner of the other former Woodbury Village store has said we can get water from there.
Great.
Oh, that's nice, yeah.
Yeah, because otherwise there's no water. Unless we go into the town hall and get bucket, you know, one jug at a time.
Yeah, well, I usually bring buckets down um and and it's it's a juggle, but I can do it. That um, that's great news. Thank you. You're checking into that.
And because um, we're, hopefully you're gonna talk about uh painting the town hall this year. We thought maybe. Uh, wouldn't be a good time to fill that particular planter. The one on the town hall steps.
Yeah, yeah, I've kind of forgotten about that. We're thinking we paint the town hall, but um. I'll put it on next time, next week's agenda or next meeting's agenda. Um. Anything? Anything else about um? Some flower boxes on the, in the village? All set. So um, I guess the select board should vote to approve this proposal. Um, do I hear a motion to that effect?
Chris Cody's moves to approve.
Okay, and Michael will second. Um, all those in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, good. Look forward to that.
Great, great, thank you. Um, we'll get work when we, when we can, yeah, thanks. We'll let you know what, how how it's coming, yeah.
Okay, and Kaki, I I have an idea that I have wanted to explore with you, so I'll give you a call sometime soon.
Great, great, okay, super.
All right.
Okay, we'll, we'll be be back in town in a week, okay?
Okay, I'll call you when you get back in town.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, so, Chris, you had wanted to um just talk a little bit more about the community values mapping report that. That was presented to the Planning Commission um a couple of weeks ago. Um. So I'm gonna give you the screen and Skip is here to also, um, you know, to talk about it, so um. All yours.
All right, so um. My concerns, my my simple concerns, uh, which I I thought that it was a wonderful report. My simple concerns were related to understanding what the different drainages were actually doing. Within the town of Woodbury, at least the. The town of Woodbury along Route fourteen, which is a very different drainage system than exists along. Uh, the Brownsville Road and sort of up towards Walkit and Elmore. So when we're thinking about this community values mapping. Where are we focused? And Skip, maybe you can help me with this. I'm not exactly sure what part of town we're focused on, I mean.
Sure, well. We're focused on every part of town.
We're focused on every part of town, not just exclusively along the Route 14 corridor. If you want, I have the readout from the community values mapping session that I could share that would demonstrate. You know, the entirety of Woodbury and, you know, the parts of Woodbury that the four teams deemed most. Most worthy of identifying, if that's something you might want to do. But in terms of drainage, I don't believe we got into any. Any aspect of drainage. It was, let me just, can I, Michael, can I share my screen?
Yeah, let me, let me get you set up to share the screen here. Hang on a second. So I'm going to make you a co-host. Let's see. How come? Let's see, how come it's not letting me do that? Maybe because I'm not the host, I'm a co-host myself.
Hey, Michael, I just stepped in and.
Okay, thank you, Leif. Thank you.
Thanks, Leif. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So to answer Chris's question. This is what we focused on. That the groups identified they were, you know, values amongst the group and they, the full list of values that we focused on. You know, our recreation, hunting, fishing, scenic, community, working landscape, historic and ecological. It wasn't anything that we were instructed to do in terms of. You know, drainage or anything to do with the aquifer in in Woodbury. It was more what's most important to us and what do we want to preserve as we move forward with the town plan?
There is a. Go ahead, Skip.
Go ahead, Michael. I'm sorry.
So there is a component of the town plan that deals with flood resiliency. Was your concern mostly with the the village and the fact that it? Woodbury Village and the fact that, you know, we have the Buck Lake. Drainage and then the, you know, Greenwood Lake, you know, those, just there's a lot of water that kind of convenes. On the village itself and the fact that the village is kind of sitting, kind of a sitting duck as it's. Been known to flood in the past. So but there is, there is a.
I guess I had two concerns. The first is, is you're correct, Michael. I had a concern about understanding flood resiliency. Which seems to be part of community and working landscape for me. When we think about these things, if you're dealing with a community and the town center is in an active floodplain. That floods on a fairly regular basis because it is built along a floodplain in Kingsbury Branch.
It's actually not designated as a floodplain, though, interestingly enough.
It is depending on which order you look at.
Okay.
You look at the hundred year. Well into that floodplain, which is what. Everybody uses for insurance purposes in the modern.
Yeah.
So it is. And this didn't pay attention to that, so that. Which is okay, I'm fine with that. Well, the other concern was that. One of the other. Aspects of our community is that we all drink groundwater, or many of us drink groundwater. Many of us have wells. And the interaction between surface water and groundwater was something that was entirely absent from this. Which is disconnected from what the state is doing on its general surveys of what we're sort of operating with. For groundwater access.
Right.
We. Engaged the state. With a mapping project in 2014. And subsequent to that, we had a groundwater study that was done by the state in 2014 or 2015. I might be wrong about those dates. It seems in some way that this should be integrated. We have lots of state-based data. That isn't part of this and it's not a fault of this committee in any way. At all. And and Skip, if if you think I'm being accusatory, I I hope you, I hope you, I hope you're not.
Oh, no, no, I, you know, I understand where you're going with that.
There's other data, there's other data that we can use to. Really push us forward in really making this project robust. That's, I think, where I'm coming from. Skip, I'm sorry.
I I get that, Chris. We were charged and I just put it up on on my screen. The two things we were charged with for this exercise, what places in Woodbury do you love? And secondly, what do you value about these places? That was it. Your, your concerns are valid. And I could bring that up to the regional planning commission and make sure that they're addressed in the town plan that's ongoing.
I think that that would be really useful because I personally value clean drinking water.
Oh, sure. Everyone has a well, I know.
We all have wells, right? We all have septic systems that are. Potentially misused or disabused or antiquated, right? I mean, these are all things that. It's not just the stuff we see.
Right.
It's the stuff that actually impacts our life and livelihood. That I think this should be kind of integrated with, so.
If I could ask you a favor, Chris. Kind of encapsulate what you just said and sent it, send it to me in an email.
I'd love to. No problem.
And I'll push, I'll push that right along to the regional planning commission and make sure it gets included in our town plan.
Thank you, Skip.
I certainly will. I understand your concern and. You know, I've only lived here for 26 years, so, you know, I've seen that the town flood a lot. And, you know, we've done a lot to mitigate that, I think, with the old store finally being removed, but I think there's more that we can do.
There is more that we can do, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Thank you, Jim. And so I think that 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 highlights my concerns.
So I think, you know, Chris, for the town plan, you know, there is a flood resiliency. Component to it, that's a required component and definitely taking a look at the village. And the situation there will will definitely be a part of that, that it'll be an important part of it, really. And then maybe some other time. You know, I, with my role at the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission as a commissioner. I've sat in on meetings for both the Winuski River Basin Plan and and now the Lemoyle River Basin Plan. And there was a, I won't go into it anymore, but I'll share with you. You know, the state is really looking at the phosphorus levels and and not much else is, you know, with their concern for Lake Champlain with these rivers. And there was a kind of an ad hoc committee, advisory committee that was formed by the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission that really came down on them for. Other chemical contaminants and for groundwater issues, the same thing, issues that you're bringing up. I won't go into that right now, but maybe. I will call you as a non-select board member and just share some of the. Some of that conversation. Because they really, they brought one of the basin plan. Folks to, you know, really kind of put the screws to them that they were kind of just looking at this one issue when there's many, many other issues to worry about.
Thanks, Michael.
Yeah. So this, you know, you know, my understanding of this exercise, Chris, was just what those two things that Skip mentioned to you was a play. It was a way for to get residents involved in the initial planning. It was hosted by Fish and Wildlife and it was. More just to kind of pick out places that people really value in in the town and why. You know, they're getting into other more kind of critical pragmatic issues that that was not really a part of this exercise. So. But what you bring up is.
I absolutely understand. I I certainly understand that. And my concern is that sometimes we don't see. The forest through the trees.
Exactly.
And we. As folks who maybe can be a little bit more informed based on our background or knowledge or our local, you know, community efforts. Can inform this. And that's how these surveys are developed. So feedback to them. Based on things that are lost in this. I I think is useful.
Yeah.
We have a great community and we can inform beyond our community based on what we know. So I don't want to lose track of that.
Right. And, you know, we would love some of your knowledge and energy in this part of the town plan that you're concerned about. We would invite you to. To help us out. I'm sure Skip would agree to that.
Absolutely, yeah, 100%.
We're really trying to make this town plan relevant to the town of Woodbury and not just kind of a postcard of Vermont that.
Yeah, I have to be honest, Skip is the one who motivated me to think about these things because. You know, we are not a one-size-fits-all state. We're a very diverse state.
Right.
Because of our landscape. In terms of the way that our landscape is used. And we're somewhat unique, actually.
We are. You know, outlier, at least.
We are certainly an outlier. Yeah, we should be paying attention to those things.
Well, I think the planning commission is in total agreement with that thought.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to contribute. Skip, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Michael, thank you.
Sure. Chuck, did you have a comment?
Yeah, do you need me for anything else?
You know, I don't think we do.
Okay, I think I'm going to sign in. I just had company come.
Okay, thanks for being here and we'll look forward to seeing you about town here soon.
Yeah, real soon.
Okay.
I appreciate it. We'll talk to you later.
Have a safe trip home.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, just a brief.
I'm going to sign up, I'm going to sign off.
Okay, thank you, Skip, for being here.
Thanks, Skip. Appreciate it.
Good to see everyone.
Thanks, Skip.
Good night.
So recently, the. Town went through. Kind of an emergency health order situation with landlord and tenant thing and. Initially, we had to call upon Jay Copping, the Callis Health Officer, to help us out. I'm, you know. As a select board chair, I'm the default health officer because we don't have one. And I felt totally inadequate to, without any training, to actually do this inspection. For. Health issues, so Jay. I asked Jay if he would help me out and he agreed to do that. This is the second time that he's been involved in a pretty. Not so pleasant situation in the town of Woodbury in his capacity as a health officer. The first one was a couple of years ago that I became aware of, but I would like to be able to offer him a small financial stipend for the time that he put into. You know, spending the hour and a half, almost two hours for the inspection and then doing up the initial report. From that inspection. He's, you know, graciously done it and says that he doesn't. Need a stipend, but he would, wouldn't. Throw it in the wastebasket if it came his way. So I was just thinking that maybe we could give him a $50 stipend for coming and. Helping the town out and me especially. For, you know, for this problem that the town basically had to address. That's all I, you know, I just wanted to make that proposal to the, to the select board. And and.
I would support, I would certainly support that.
All right.
His information has been sort of critical and understanding what is, what is actually going on in this location.
Yeah.
So in this case, I would certainly support something.
And I feel pretty, pretty sure that Paul, Paul will also be in agreement to this. It's, it's kind of a, it's a small amount. So I guess what I'd like to, I I'll make the motion, even though the chair isn't supposed to, somebody can. Give us a demerit or whatever. I would just like to.
I would make a motion to approve. Jay having a small stipend.
Okay, good, good. $50, okay, so I would second that. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, so I guess we'll let Brandy know to cut a check and I'll find out his mailing address. Send him a check and a thank you.
Actually, the thank you note is probably worth more than the 50.
It is, and I've already thanked him many times over in emails, but, yeah.
Just some clarity about the situation was really helpful.
So just a couple of quick updates. The the RFP for the library roof has gone out. And. There'll be a site visit at the, at the library on April 23rd, Friday morning for the. Folks interested in in bidding for that project. I think the bids are due back at the town office on May 5th, if I remember right. So we'll see what happens with that. And then we are in the process of creating. Notice of violation for the zoning ordinance on a junk. Junk car, junk in general issue. It's in the works. Hopefully it'll get done this week and then and we can actually mail it to the, to the folks. And so that's pretty much just a couple of quick updates.
Michael, once we, once that is done, do we have something that will be part of standing for town records that shows what our? Protocols actually are for defining these seem like.
Well. At at the present, we're, we're working from one clause in our, in the present zoning ordinance. That's, that's all. All that really exists at the moment as in in the zoning ordinance that addresses. Junk cars or other trash, etc. We do have a draft junk ordinance. That's sitting on the website. We were kind of waiting for the pandemic to. Pass so that we could actually have some hearings so that, because there, I think there are people on. You know, that's can be an issue that there are two sets of opinions for and against, and we wanted to give people a chance to. Be able to vet those in something other than a Zoom meeting. But that would address this issue much more thoroughly. It's like a. 15-page document, basically. On a VLCT model template. And also working from the town of Woolcott that has, has recently used that template in the last few years to create a zoning ordinance. I use both the template and the Woolcott zoning ordinance to form the the Woodbury one. That we have, and that was pretty much inspired by a different situation in town. So and in this particular instance, we've also incorporated or. Asked for help from the Agency of Natural Resources. They have an enforcement and compliance division that addresses these issues also. And they are, they have been actively involved at this site, but we've been pushed by at least one town resident and and actually the neighbors. In this area where this violation is is occurring. To try to to have the town do something about it. So this is what we're, this is, you know, what we can do at at the, at the present moment. Working with that one clause. In the zoning ordinance and have been working with our town lawyer, Michael Tyron. And he, you know, there's a scenario that he's mapped out for me that we'll submit the letter. Notice of violation or NOV, as it's called, to this property owner, sending it both certified and and regular mail. They have a certain number of days to respond to address the situation. There's also, they have the. They can go through a hearing before the zoning board of adjustment. To appeal this notice of violation. And then the zoning board of adjustment would pass judgment on the, the. Um, and then the, the zoning board of adjustment would pass judgment on the, the notice of violation. And, um, depending, uh, so the zoning board of adjustment can either throw the thing out as irrelevant, or they can, um, add to it or, um, just to validate the notice of violation, um, in which case there would again be, uh, some, a time period of compliance from the property owner. We could add on fines, um, that would be something that the zoning board could, could look into. Um, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance about fining or these other steps to go beyond this. But what ultimately would happen if there's no compliance, we would pass on the notice of violation and the fact of non-compliance to the Washington County Superior Court, and they would be the ones that would, um, carry it from there, it would be, it would be kind of out of our hands. So that's the long-term thing for this situation.
Thank you, Michael. That's great clarity. I appreciate it.
So, and I have, you know, I, I'm not gonna say anymore, I, I'm not gonna express my opinion about what probably will happen. Um, we'll, we'll see what happens, but, yeah, so it, it could be a long dragged-out thing, um, and with no compliance at all, that, that's definitely a possibility. But it, it would be good, and you know, this junk ordinance, there are people that are saying, you know, it's my property, I can do whatever I want. There are people that are really upset about other places in town where, you know, things just kind of look like hell, I guess I'll say. And the junk violation would, would help with that, and it would be, um, but it's something that the town needs to debate, I think, discuss and, and either modify the present draft or, um, or approve of it, and so that's something for the future, um, or it's kind of just waiting, um, for us to be able to get together as a a body and, and.
And I, I strongly agree with that.
Yeah.
This is a conversation that needs to be had as a community. Um, and part of it is a visibility issue, but part of it is, you know, um, I'm sorry, I'm always worried about water.
Yeah, it is, it is a water issue too.
What I do for a living, um, is worry about what's happening in rock and water, so, um, do you worry about what's happening in, in, in our water, in our, in, in our soils and our substrate, so.
A couple of, of the sites that have been into question in the past that, um, the A and R has been dealing with are directly, uh, within the vicinity of, of either a major, uh, waterway as a brook running through the town or as a major lake. So, yeah, definitely.
So there are some concerns in here, and we have to come together as a town to decide those things. This is an isolated issue. I, I have no, you know, this is one thing, but I think that as a town, it's, uh, as soon as we can.
Right.
Time to have this conversation.
And Woodbury is not alone with these problems, and I think about every town has to deal with it, so. Okay, so, um, the personnel policy, um, it's almost eight o'clock, I'm just wondering if people have the energy to do a quick review of the feedback we got back from Jill Muir. We can save this for another time. We could review it on our own. I was, um, I just want to feel out, those of us who are still here, what our energy level is at the moment. Um, we could go through it pretty quickly. One of the thoughts I had was to actually see if I could arrange a phone meeting with Jill to go over some of her suggestions. And that we could try to do this, um, with a less full agenda, maybe at our next select board meeting. Where, but I know the select board is kind of wanting to get this pretty much done before we start the process of hiring, uh, third full-time road crew members, so that we actually have a an updated personnel policy that can be part of the, um, the hiring process. So, and we're pretty much there as far as the information that, uh, a hiree would, would want to be able to, to see. So we could just give them a rough draft, but, um.
Uh, so this is Chris, and I would just say that, um, I, I would like Paul to be part of this conversation.
Okay, okay.
I mean, we're only a select board of three.
Right.
Pretty, um, pretty small.
It is, yeah.
I mean, so.
You definitely feel it when one person isn't here.
And I'd also, um, like to make sure that we all had time to review any comments.
Okay. Yeah, her, her comments are.
Obviously had time to, to review.
Okay, alright, and I haven't had much time either. Her comments are pretty brief, and some of them are brief enough that I'm not really quite sure what she, what the meaning was behind the comment, which is why I was hoping to maybe have a.
Conversation would be.
Yeah.
Would, would be really useful before we move forward with this.
So let's.
I'd like to hear from Ms. Diana, um, and Mrs. Durkey. Are you all comfortable with us waiting on this? I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna have us push this back a bit.
I am.
Yeah, I know, I don't expect anything much is gonna change that would affect us. So we just.
There, there is actually a little bit, you know, and I don't think I've sent, I don't think I've sent, um, Jill's, um, comments to anybody at the town office, so I will do that tomorrow. There are some things that, uh, she mentions about elected officials and how they are addressed in the, in the personnel policy, so, um.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that Brandy gets it too.
Yes, please, because I actually think that you all are part of this.
Yeah, you definitely are.
Yeah.
Her comments.
Yeah.
Address that.
Good, so I, I just don't, I don't think it's a conversation that we're ready to have yet until.
Well, okay. I, I feel, would feel better that way too, and it is eight o'clock, and I would love to, to not be spending twenty minutes on this right now, so.
Yeah, I'd be great with that. I'm gonna go try to read some books to my kids, so.
Okay, alright.
Chill out.
Good.
Nice to be, but I can hear him over there, so.
Okay, they're, they're waiting. Inpatiently or impatiently, I'm not sure.
Inpatiently, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's usually the case with, uh, young children. Um, so I, I forgot to put other business on the agenda, but if there is any other business, um, other than adjourning, anything else that, um, I don't hear anything at all, so, um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Chris makes a motion to adjourn.
Okay, and Michael seconds it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good night, everybody.
Thank you all very much.